Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Monday, March 28, 2018 City Council Meeting. Can I get a call to order, or a pledge of allegiance from the Girl Scout Troop 2966? Would you lead us, please? All rise.
I just tripped over. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, my nation under our, in which this law, the liberty of justice for all.
Thank you. Can I get a council roll call, please?
Mayor Verapapa?
Here.
Mayor Protem Deaton?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Sis Darsic?
Here.
Councilmember Masalavet?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. We're going to have the approval of agenda and waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Do we have any items we'd like to rearrange or pull at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is Presentations and Recognition. Our first one will be the Orange County Vector Control Board Recognition. I'd like to call upon Councilmember Sandra Masalavet to present the award to Laura Young, Director of Communications.
We are lucky in Orange County to have a vector control agency that is so good that it's won a state award. And it is a certificate of recognition to Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District. And they received a special award for their innovation, and I can attest to the real innovation and attempt to keep pesticides under control in the county when they're trying to take care of our mosquito problem and rats and other things. And their education and outreach and the leadership in promoting integrated pest management practices. And from the city of Seal Beach, I would like to present this to the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District for doing such a great job for getting the state to recognize your accomplishments and how well you've done this job of trying to keep the West Nile virus under control. And you may say something.
I want to thank you guys for your recognition. This is really a team effort, and we work a lot with the city and our trustees to make sure that we do everything we can to minimize our pesticide use and make sure that our residents are as safe as possible from any vector-borne diseases. So, thank you for your recognition in this.
Well, thank you for all you do. Well, Councilman Masalavet, this is a double lucky day because we have some great gals in our community. I'd like to call upon Troop 2966. They have a nice presentation to present to us. Not you, though.
Oh, you get to go back?
No, no, you can say... Ladies, you want to come up and give us your presentation, please?
Good evening. We are Troop 2966. We are here to explain our Bronze Award project. On March 4th, our troop had a planting day to plant 130 plants with other Girl Scouts from my Seal Beach service unit in the First Street parking lot. We planted many California native plants such as buckwheat, milkweed, lavender, California lilac, coyote mint, monkeyflower dewweed, and sage. We planted, watered, and put mulch around all the plants to keep them warm. This project shall benefit the community and will remain for many years to come. One of the reasons why we planted these plants is because we wanted to attract pollinators, especially bees and butterflies.
We also did this because it is necessary for our Bronze Award. For our Bronze Award, we needed to do our Girl Scout Take Action project. This means that we needed to involve the community and make a permanent change.
We also looked for a suitable location for the plants and made sure the area was irrigated and had plenty of space for the plants to grow. Some plants we looked, some places we looked were the First Street parking lot, the pier, Electric Avenue, Ocean Avenue, and Main Street.
We can post an email. We can post an email explaining our plan and asking permission to plant plants. We have met with Ms. Ingram, Ms. Deaton, Mr. Verapapa, Mr. Kelsey, and Mr. Talarico. After we got permission, our next job was to research plants that were native to the area but would also attract pollinators who would help to brighten things up. To raise money for the 130 plants we bought, we had a yard sale, used some of our cookie money, and collected donations. Thank you very much for donations from the Blue Jeans Thursday. We also want to thank you for giving us permission and support. We especially would like to thank Mr. Talarico, Mr. Kelsey, and Ms. Ingram for not only being at the event but for helping us throughout the whole project. They helped us choose plants, organize donations, and find a nursery. Thank you for your never-ending support and help. Also, we have given you a seed packet with milkweed seeds and a patch that we handed out at the event.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we have something for you, too. Well, for your great service and your dedication to our community, we really appreciate it. I know, speaking for the council, we see what you've done, and we really do appreciate the hard work that you've all put into it. And we have a little award for you to take with you. And I'll just call your names so everyone knows who you are. Olivia? Great job. Abby? Great job. Why don't you all just stay up here after I give the awards, and I'll take one last picture. Claire? Friel? Lily? Thank you. Great job. Tana? Great job, Tana. Thank you. Myra? Robin? Lily? Grace. I won't get you, I'm... Can we take one picture for your family and friends? Come over here. Lily, come over this way. No, no, send this way. Come over, I need your hand. Thank you all. Okay, thank you again. At this time, we'll move to oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. So, our first oral communicator is a bunny rabbit?
My name is Mary Hollen. I am from the Seal Beach Lions Club, a resident of Leisure World in Seal Beach, and we're here to let everyone know about our Easter egg hunt this Saturday in Eisenhower Park. The Easter Bunny came with me. This is our Easter Bunny from Coastline Drive. I don't think you can see anything in there. This is the second annual hunt that we've put on in Eisenhower Park. It'll be at 10 o'clock a.m. on Saturday. It's for children 10 and under. We'll have three categories for the children: 3 and under, 4 to 6, and 7 to 10. And there will be designated areas for the age groups. The children will be sent out at 15-minute intervals to give everybody a good chance. And the Easter Bunny will be there for pictures, so please bring your cameras, your Easter bonnets. We'll have a little staging area for the kids to have their pictures, and we will make sure that everybody gets a picture with the Easter Bunny. And we hope to see everyone there, Saturday at 10 o'clock, Eisenhower Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Don Rounds at 1401 Seal Way in Old Town. And I'd like to address the council on a matter that's all over the news lately, and that is this idea of sanctuary cities. And our governor, in recent weeks, has proclaimed that California is indeed a sanctuary state, in essence, turning his back on many of the federal laws and jurisdictions that are currently in place constitutionally. I don't think Governor Brown is suggesting that we become a country to ourselves yet, enforcing our own immigration policies and our own borders and so on. Those considerations are clearly spelled out in the Constitution of the United States to be the responsibility of the federal government. I would encourage this council to consider taking up the, some investigations, some research, and perhaps taking steps to opt out of any sanctuary city considerations for the city of Seal Beach. I'd like for us to perhaps take a look at the lead that was provided for us by our sister city just to our north, Los Alamitos. At their council meeting a week or two ago, they opted out, they decided to opt out of this sanctuary city business here in California. So, with all due respect, I would encourage the council to consider all the ramifications, all the considerations, all the benefits that we derive from our federal government in terms of the border enforcement, immigration enforcement, et cetera. And don't seek to be a harbor for illegal, criminal aliens, et cetera, and support our law enforcement and support the federal government in terms of immigration and border enforcement. So, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Admiral Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Chad Curthy. I'm a resident of Rancho Cinemargarita, but I have some important information that will affect the city of Seal Beach, its citizens, and its first responders' safety. I am a 911 dispatcher in the Orange County Fire Authority's 911 Center, where I've worked for 10 years dedicated to your safety. As you're aware, Mayor Protem Deaton sits on the OCFA Board of Directors, where she represents the rest of the city council and all the Seal Beach citizens. Currently, the OCFA Board of Directors is attempting to significantly decrease the daily staffing in the 911 Center from what it currently is by switching the dispatchers from the existing 24-hour shifts that we're on to 12-hour shifts. In fact, the new staffing reduction the OCFA Board of Directors are trying to implement will cost over half a million dollars more a year. This evening, I brought copies of a study with me that have been conducted by the OCFAs, have been conducted regarding the OCFA's 911 Center staffing. I've also brought the 911 dispatcher's response to this study. You'll find the response is easy to follow and clearly laid out. There are enough for each city council member, and I'll hand them to the clerk after for distribution. The study regarding the 911 Center staffing was published earlier this month. The study was conducted by OCFA Assistant Chief Dave Anderson. I'll say that again, the study was conducted by Dave Anderson, an Assistant Chief in the OCFA's executive management. This is the OCFA's own study and numbers. The dispatchers had zero input into this study. Before publishing the study, Dave Anderson also published an OCFA 911 Center staffing study in December of 2016, so this is his second one he's conducted in two years, or three years. One interesting fact about Dave Anderson is that he is a former battalion chief who oversaw the OCFA's 911 Center for about two years. He's intimately familiar with what we do there. Both his 2016 and 2018 studies support that 24-hour shifts are advantageous for the fire authority, its member cities, and the taxpayer. They give the best coverage by far, meaning the most amount of dispatchers on duty at the same time, and at the same time are the cheapest option by over half a million dollars a year. Currently, under the existing 24-hour shift schedule, we have 10 911 dispatchers on duty at the same time, 24 hours a day, on OCFA property. Under the proposed 12-hour shifts, you would see as much of a decrease as four people each day. There are six hours during the day that there will only be six dispatchers on property. This is a clear downsizing of 911. Not only would it be a downsizing, but the fire authority will be paying over half a million dollars more a year to downsize. It's all here in this report conducted by OCFA management. Currently, the dispatchers were 24-hour shifts, but we only get paid 17 hours each shift. We do not get paid for the sleep time. We only get paid if we're woken up due to emergency activity. So, that means every night, we have people sleeping across the hall from the dispatch for free. We do this for surge capacity in the event of a large emergency or a surge of 911 calls. We have no problem with this practice or desire to change it. We want our staffing to remain unchanged. Having us sleep for free gives the fire authority 25,480 hours of free surge capacity a year. If you switch to 12-hour shifts, you lose this imperative capability, and you're paying to lose it. What is going to happen when the short-staffed 911 Center receives a surge of 911 calls and radio calls from firefighters at the same time, which happens numerous times daily? Whose 911 call is going to have to wait to be answered when there's just not enough 911 dispatchers to answer it? Mayor Protem Deaton, as a member of the OCFA Board of Directors, you and the other board members are ultimately in charge of the life safety of 23 cities, including Seal Beach, and the 1.8 million people who depend on OCFA for emergency fire and paramedic services. Please tell me who in the county should receive less service? Who is not important? Whose emergency just doesn't matter? I am here to hold Mayor Protem Deaton and the rest of the OCFA Board of Directors accountable if they continue with this deadly decision. Rest assured, when this downstaffing gets someone killed, the 911 dispatchers will be there to make sure the appropriate people are aware that the OCFA Board of Directors knowingly downsized the 911 Center staffing and did it with multiple studies that strongly advise against it. We will hold the board accountable. Please do not jeopardize the safety of those that are depending on you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council members and staff. My name is Clara Wise, and I live in Seal Beach. And I really wasn't prepared to speak this evening, but I really wanted to share how strongly so many people feel against what Los Alamos did with the opting out of the state program. And I strongly urge the council to look very carefully at what that would mean and not choose to follow the city of Los Alamos in what they're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mike Brayke, Old Town. Just like everybody else today, I went down south of Wales. But when I got out of my car, I was walking towards the rocks. And I haven't been down there in a while. And I look across the water, and there's shacks literally built on the rocks and stretched all the way down. I don't know if you guys have been contacted the city of Long Beach or putting pressure on them to alleviate this mess. But I stood here three years ago, and when I first saw those tricklings of transients hanging out around here, I urge you to take some action for it. And it's just getting worse and worse and worse and worse. And there's people over there. There's no residents over there, so you know they're coming over here, staying on our property, vandalizing things, doing whatever they do at night. And you're going to build a multimillion-dollar neighborhood across the water from there, and you think someone's going to want to spend a million dollars on a house looking at that mess over there? I don't think so. So I'm just urging you to put pressure on the city of Long Beach to clean up that mess over there. Thanks.
Mayor, may I say something?
Mike, I meant to call you back today, and I didn't, but I've got something for you to do on that. Okay? Thanks.
No, it's all right.
And I was told they have three that go to the Long Beach City Council, only one. Anyway, yes, I was down there this morning, but that's my usual morning walk, and they are getting bigger over there. And there have been Seal Beach cops over there taking pictures, and nothing has happened. I don't know if they've contacted Long Beach or not, but they're three different camps, and they're growing every day. And I said, when that river's end property is vacant, guess what's going to happen? The same thing that happened with the pier when you didn't take care of the pier, like the fire department wanted you to do. Sanctuary cities, sanctuary states. This is a sanctuary city because they will not comply with the new rules by the state for properties sitting in Old Town or in your neighborhoods as well for units. While I'm sitting here and watching Leisure World put bathrooms in, and I'm going through the checks today, and are we paying for some of their bathrooms? I know that they give bathrooms through the federal grant for the ones that are high so they can walk in. But I was told in 2010 that there was some money given to Leisure World for bathrooms. So if you're going to give money to Leisure World for bathrooms, you've got a lot of seniors down here in Old Town. You've got a lot of seniors in your neighborhood, and your neighborhood, and surf side. So we need the money too. And I was looking on the invoices, and I don't see my check there yet, so I'll letter another letter. You can't do this. You can't do this to people that live in town that have been here longer than we have been here. So I do want to talk about when you came up with the rule of no more bathrooms. Well, I mean, that's just like when there was no rule for elevators. So if you needed an elevator for your house, for your senior, or your family, you just had to go to L.A. You went to L.A., and you got the disability. You got it there, and you brought it up here, and everybody got the elevators they need. So when we need bathrooms, now we're going to have to go down to Hutt to the disability. And I don't see any of you giving me any of the plans back. So you threw them away. You shouldn't do that. When you vote against somebody, give them the plans back so they can take them down to Los Angeles. Because, I'm not sure when this happened, but for a bathroom, it was only 237 square feet over here on 7th Street. The variance was permitted for reasonable accommodation. And that's what you're doing for Leisure World, is reasonable accommodation. They're enclosing all their balconies and all their patios. So, I mean, you can't do one section of the city without doing another section. And as far as a sanctuary city and getting out of it, we don't even house any criminals in this city. We can only house a criminal if they can pay, and they don't pay enough. So why don't we close down the city hall, the city prison up there? And then you'll have the money to pay the two extra police... Wait a minute. You'll have the money if you close it down. They don't pay enough money anyway. The citizens of Seal Beach help pay for their bed and breakfast up there. So, I mean, come on. And there are criminals running around all the time. And I asked someone, who pays for those helicopters that come in? Because we don't have helicopters to chase them. And they said whoever sends them over here pays. But the little whales this morning. Joe, you did a good job on TV. Everybody loved it. And it's all over TV. It's unbelievable. There's so many people down there now, it's like they're going to spend the night. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move right along to the next item, which is the City Attorney Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Prior to the meeting this evening, the City Council met in closed session regarding the one item on the posted agenda. As you know, Mayor, you were not in attendance due to a conflict of interest, and you abstained from that discussion. The City Council took no reportable action.
Thank you. City Manager's Report?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. You have three items tonight. First of all, I'd like to ask our Marine Safety Chief, Joe Bailey, just to give an update on the whales that were in the river over the weekend and especially today. Chief?
Thank you, City Manager. Honorable Council, just a quick rundown on what's going on with the whales. Yesterday, we had a report of one whale in the river, went down and looked at it, and it seemed like it wasn't in distress and doing its natural behavior. And so we just let it do what it's going to do and try and keep people away from it. Today, we had two whales, and then the word was out. So then we had thousands of people down on the rocks watching it. So today, we had a lifeguard on a PWC or a jet ski because we had people, good Samaritans, trying to help the whale in inflatable boats with motors in the river in the surf. So we kept people, swimmers, surfers, boaters, away. 100 feet is what we're supposed to do. We had two whales, and we watched them. We had a lifeguard on the rocks to make sure with thousands of people on the rocks all day. I'm really surprised no one fell and hurt themselves seriously on the rocks as they watched the whales. So that was good. Around 4 o'clock today, one of the whales decided it had enough fun in Seal Beach and took off. And we still, right before the meeting, I went and checked, and we still have one whale back near the Marina Bridge. So tomorrow, once again, we'll pick up the same thing, and we'll have a lifeguard on duty to make sure people stay away from the animal. And hopefully, it'll take off. Hopefully, it takes off tonight, so we don't have to deal with this tomorrow. Just a couple of points from the experts. A natural behavior for, this is a California gray whale, a natural behavior for that whale, and we see this three or four times a year, but usually just out on the beach, is for them to come up to shallow areas and rub their bodies on the smooth sand to get rid of barnacles. So when you see them rolling over and rubbing themselves, they're trying to shed barnacles off their skin. And the other natural behavior would be just in their feeding. And so the experts tell me they don't look in distress, they're doing one of those two natural behaviors or both, and they'll leave when they want to leave, and they're doing what whales do. So we'll just keep monitoring them, and hopefully, this one takes off tonight.
Thank you.
The second item I have is kind of a really cool story. Elena, if you could stand up for a moment, please. Elena Hung, our Finance Manager. Something really cool happened to her this weekend that I think put Seal Beach on the map, so I wanted to share that with all of you. She was at spring training for the last weekend with some friends and was selected to throw out the first pitch with the L.A. Dodgers and the Chicago White Sox. So she made history for Seal Beach and for herself. Also got to experience, I think, the foot-long hot dog as well as an 18-inch slice of pizza. She got an autographed baseball as well as a hug from one of the Dodgers. And so I just wanted to say, Elena, congratulations, and thank you for putting Seal Beach on the map this weekend. And then the final item I have, if you just give me a moment. I had the most awesome, 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 totally awesome experience over the last two weekends, along with Crystal Landivazo, our interim Community Development Director, and Steve Fowler, our Assistant Planner, participating in the CERT Academy. Want to share that with you because it was just an incredible experience. Of course, Bob was there along with us, representing Seal Beach. So I want to share a little bit about it with you in terms of who the coordinators were, so you could see the significance of the program. Ed Fleming, who's a retired OCFA Division Chief, who also served the community of Seal Beach, and is now an Emergency Services Coordinator with the city of La Palma, is the Plan Section Coordinator. Lori Erpelding is the Emergency Services Coordinator with the city of Cypress, Logistics Section Coordinator, Corporal Dan Brant, who's the Emergency Services Coordinator with the city of Los Alamos. And as all of you know, the former School Resource Officer with Los Alamos High School. And then, of course, our own Corporal Julia Klasby, who's our Emergency Services Coordinator with the city of Seal Beach. Several participating agencies, and again, this was two consecutive weekends, the Joint Forces Training Base, where the academy was held, Orange County Fire Authority, both Fire Station 64 and Fire Station 2 were there from the cities of Westminster and Los Alamos, Care Ambulance, and then 45 police explorers from Orange County cities who were there to support the exercise on our last day. Terms of instructors, of course, all of you know and appreciate Wink Chase, who's the West County, from West County CERT, who's the operations lead and is out and active in our community especially. Chris Moskowitz, also from West County CERT, who's an Assistant Trailer Lead. Dr. Michelle Ryan, who's the Medical Team Lead with CERT. She's a Seal Beach resident, retired M.D., an incredible passion for the profession and using that medical profession and her passion to give back to her community in a positive, powerful, and meaningful way in teaching us all about medical aid. And then Dr. Heather Williams, who's the Regional Peer Support Coordinator for the Orange County Sheriff's Department, who taught us about disaster psychology. Some of you may remember her. She was part of the grief counseling team who served our community during the Salon Meritage tragedy. Corporal Jeremy Fletcher with Westminster PD, who's their Terrorism Liaison Officer. And then also wanted to give a shout out to Jeanette Vella, who's the Administrative Lead with West County CERT, as well as Pat and Roberta O'Toole, photographers, former residents of Seal Beach, who memorialize the entire program. And I have a couple of poster boards here that they prepared for tonight as well. This was the largest, in 10 years, the largest CERT program, largest academy since the inception of CERT 10 years ago. There were 58 academy graduates from more than seven cities. 16, so Seal Beach had the largest number of participation in terms of communities. So 16 from Seal Beach, nine from Cypress, eight Los Alamos, six from La Palma, five from Westminster, four from Buena Park, and then 10 from some other surrounding cities in the region. As I mentioned, two consecutive weekends of 20 hours of instruction over four days. FEMA-approved course that included disaster preparedness, medical operations, light search and rescue, fire suppression, which I'll show you in just a moment, team organization and emotional first aid. We had a simulated emergency exercise on the last day of the event, which is we were coordinated into teams in responding to a major freeway incident. And as I mentioned before, just the explorers, police explorers, they were actually simulating injuries, trapped under vehicles and those sorts of things. I know all of you know what CERT is, but I'm just so passionate about this, after having spent the time there, and really want to advocate for the importance of this program. They educate people about disaster preparedness for hazards that may impact their area, and trains, residents, and basic disaster response skills such as fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, and disaster medical operations. With this training, and this is why I feel it's so important, CERT members can assist themselves, their families, and others in their neighborhood or workplace when professional responders are not immediately available to help, for example, in the event of a large earthquake or major disaster. Just mentioned before, West County CERT comprises six cities: Seal Beach, Los Alamos, Cypress, Westminster, La Palma, and Buena Park. I want to thank especially Crystal Landivazo and Steve Fowler, who stepped up and donated and gave back to their community and spent two weekends as part of that program. I know I personally met so many Seal Beach residents, I haven't had the opportunity to meet, and made some really good new friends. Also want to thank the entire CERT team. I mentioned some of them before, for their commitment to the West County region and to all of our communities that serve. Really, in terms of cohesiveness, I can't say enough about the teamwork, the camaraderie of the entire group. And just anybody that's interested in learning more about CERT, I would encourage you to go to their website at westcountycert.com. And on a personal mission, I'm going to personally advocate on behalf of this program. And I want more of our staff members, I know it made a significant impact on the community to see, you know, we have city staff members there. It's so important in terms of the program and what they do for our community, as well as the council. I encourage all five of you to be a part of the CERT, at least go through the first training, because especially in the event of a large disaster, the five of you in your neighborhoods are going to need to be able to sustain until first responders can get there. So having said that, I just wanted to share the impact. I do have a photo back here. This is our graduation photo after all the police chiefs and commanders came and gave us our certificates. So here's a picture of all 58 participants. Here's just a poster board illustrating, I believe, on our second day where we learned from OCFA in terms of fire suppression and how to put out a fire with a buddy in terms of safety. As you can see, they were actual fires, and we were learning about fire extinguisher use. And then, as I mentioned on the last day, we did a full simulated exercise that involved a freeway car pileup and injuries. You can see the explorers. It's hard to see from here, but I would encourage you after the meeting to come up and look at this, with actual explorers that were simulating injuries and search and rescue teams and all of us out there, having to rescue them, practice the medical aid skills that we had learned and so forth. So as you can see, I'm pretty passionate about it, and I'd be happy to share any information. And again, just want to put a shameless plug out for the CERT team and all they do for our community. That's all I have.
And you've got a new hat.
Great, thank you.
Oh, yes.
Are we going to see you with a hat?
Well, this is actually Crystal's, because I forgot mine at home. And she has blood on her gloves, so I'm not going to touch them. But our hat, our goggles, safety goggles, and gloves. And so, Crystal, anything you want to add as well?
No, I really just wanted to echo that. In all honesty, I didn't really know what I was signing up for. I had a general idea of what CERT was, and so I thought, you know, this seems kind of interesting, let me try it out. I really, when I got home after everything was over this last Saturday, I went online and I started looking up the CERT programs and other areas for my family and my friends, and just kind of telling them, you really need to do this. And again, just, you know, the basic, the first class, I think, is so crucial and important, really, just to get a basic understanding on simple things around your house that you need to be aware of, just simple first aid items that if there is a... need to be aware of, just simple first aid items that if there is a big earthquake, some disaster that occurs, it's important to be able to know what you need to do for yourself and then for whatever neighbors you can also.
Great, thank you. It was costly as well, because, of course, now Bob has to have the exact same generator that West County CERT uses. So that's a $2,000 expenditure he was showing me over the weekend, but it just goes to show you the passion in terms of importance of being prepared and ready for a disaster. That's all I have.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Sounds very detailed and informative. Okay, we'll move to council comments. We'll start on my left. Councilmember Moore, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, I was at Run Seal Beach with Mayor Verapapa and enjoyed seeing all the people at the event promoting healthy lifestyle. And I'm also interested in the CERT. I think I'm going to take that next year.
I'll remind you.
And I'd just like to wish everyone Happy Easter. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Steven?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say tonight, we had someone come and talk to us about OCFA, and I just want to say that that's all part of labor negotiations, in case you wondered what that was about, just to let my colleagues know it's part of our labor negotiations. I also wanted to thank you, Mike, for coming tonight, and I wanted to address the homeless issue just a little bit. I've received lots and lots of complaints about the homeless and how it's growing on the rocks. I'd like to thank Commander Gonchar for every time I call him, no matter what time, in the morning or night, that he does get ahold of Long Beach. Long Beach, I think, needs some help from all of us. I think we should start calling Long Beach. Our police officers have actually gone over there and cleaned them out on occasion, but it's not our jurisdiction and we're running into issues there. So, yes, we have an issue. So I would ask everybody to take the responsibility upon yourselves and call Long Beach and ask them to clean it out because it is a mess. So thank you for taking your time and coming out here tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Sastik?
Hi. Excuse me, I attended the Los Alamos State of the City this week. I also wanted to make an announcement that in two days, on Wednesday night, the Los Alamos Wetlands is having a meeting, beginning their environmental impact process. It's the first community workshop meeting for the next phase. They spent several years working on a restoration conceptual plan, and now they're beginning a environment impact report plan. They're going to work on designing an optimized restoration design for habitat restoration protection. A lot of the, those of you who aren't familiar with it over there, we have a lot of degraded wetlands. It's only, it's actually about a fourth of the area that it used to be in the past, and so they're working on trying to not only restore habitat, but it's also important for water conservation, collection of water, drainage, and things for our community too. So if you're interested, the meeting's going to be at Mary Wilson Library, Wednesday from 6 to 8, and everybody's welcome if they want to come in and participate in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Masalabat?
Well, I'll just piggyback on to that meeting with the Joint Naval Land Use Plan that the city is planning with the Navy base. And that public meeting, there are two of them scheduled, and I think it's the second and the fourth?
The fourth and the fifth.
The fourth and the fifth. One is at Marina Center, the other is at Station 48. And I think it would be important for all of us to participate and find out what the plan is and how we go about influencing that plan. And I was at the RUN Saturday for a little while, and there were a lot of people there. It was hard to find a place to park, I might add. But in any case, there were a lot of people there, they were having a good time, and I was glad to see how many people participated. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I attended the CTC meet and greet, it's kind of like the Transportation Coastal Commission last week. That was a good meeting, just to kind of know who the representatives were on that board. And on Saturday, along with Councilmember Moore, we attended the 44th Annual Run Seal Beach. It was a great event. We had a really good time. We actually walked from the starting line to the finish line, so we were pretty fast. I'd like to thank the board of Run Seal Beach, city staff, police and fire department, all the VIPs that were there, all the volunteers and vendors, as well as the Lions Clubs and the local clubs. They did a great job. I stayed there for about two and a half hours and pulled out of there about 9:30, and it was wide open again. So great job to everybody working on that. So thank you. All right, we'll move to the next item, which is council items. We'll go to item A, which is the city of Seal Beach Strategic Plan, the six-month objectives update. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This item, as you know, the council met with staff on March 7, 2018, at a special meeting to review the progress made on our six-month objectives and reevaluate our three-year goals. What you have before you is just the actual report that came out of that meeting. As you know, all of the goal areas stayed the same in terms of the plan, work plan over the next few years, and there were some new objectives added, which is a pretty aggressive plan for staff over the next six months. Six months nevertheless, it's our plan and we're moving forward. I'm not going to highlight any of those since this is our first receive and file of the actual strategic plan. And then my update next month, we'll go into more detail in terms of status on progress made on each one of the objectives. Unless the council has any questions on this one, this is just a receive and file item tonight.
Any questions for?
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item B is the update on Gum Grove Nature Park. I believe we have a presentation?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As you know, you had requested at the last meeting that staff come before the council and provide an update on Gum Grove Nature Park. I'd like to, first of all, introduce Joe Talarico, who's our, as all of you know, our not-so-new landscape maintenance supervisor, who's going to present before you tonight for the first time, along with Tim Kelsey, who have been working together as a team on this item, and really want to thank them for their efforts in supporting Mayor Verapapa of this item. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Joe.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and City Staff. We have a short presentation of the status of Gum Grove Park.
Testing, now we're on. Right, okay. Yeah, it's, yeah. So we have a short presentation to present. Mayor Verapapa asked for an update of Gum Grove Park, so I'm going to start off with a little history of Gum Grove. In the early 1970s, the city of Seal Beach went into a lease agreement with the landowners of roughly 10 acres of land located at Crestview and Avalon. The park received its name Gum Grove Park Nature Area by the members of the Parks and Rec Commission. They chose the name as it had been known by locals for many years as the Gum Grove. So in June of 1972, the city council passed, approved, and adopted the name for the newly developed park, Gum Grove Park Nature Area. In 1989, the park was deeded to the city by the Mole Develop Corporation. In this slide here, you can see that the park is heavily wooded with eucalyptus trees. This grove consists of two eucalyptus, blue gum, which is Eucalyptus globulus, and red gum, Eucalyptus calmedennis. It's been thought that the grove was planted in the late 1800s. We have referenced, reading, excuse me, we have read documents referencing the Gum Grove Park as far back as 1930. Here's some aerial shots showing the vacant trees here with some decline in the canopy. Again, here is another aerial shot with two dead eucalyptus trees, and you can see some decline here. In this photograph, you can see the park sits adjacent to the Cerritos Wetlands, vast marsh that at one time covered 4,000 acres. Today, that's all that's left is roughly about 800 acres. So with that being said, the park serves as a home and refuge to a lot of rare and endangered animals. As you can see here, pictured to the left, is a great-horned owl. We have two pairs of great-horned owls living in the park. These owls need the presence of dead and decayed hollowed trees, and this is why I wouldn't recommend removing all the dead trees in the grove. Although protected under the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, the great-horned owl is not listed as threatened or endangered, but is definitely a great sight to see when walking in the park. We've been told that there have been bald eagles spotted in the park, along with some of the rarer species of sparrow, like this belting sparrow here, pictured to the right. Again, is a great-horned owl pictured in the back of the grove. Now, I know everyone sees this picture and they're all probably thinking the only good snake is a dead snake. But this is actually a gopher snake, and it's beneficial to the grove's ecosystem. And these snakes spend 90% of their time in burrows. This way, they help with erosion. Their main source of food would be rodents, gophers, and other burrowing animals, so they're definitely a big help as far as erosion goes. In this picture, we have a wandering skipper butterfly and a great egret pictured in the In May of 1987, the city had Gold Coast Environmental Services prepare an analyst of Gum Grove Nature Park. The report included the following findings. One, the overall condition of the eucalyptus trees at Gum Grove Park with regard to apparent disease and structural problems, the percentage of usable grove trees and their approximate worth, the suitability of the environment for the tree species presented, the short-term and long-term forecast for the grove based upon existing geographical and horticultural conditions. The findings basically said the overall condition of the park needed attention. The recommendations were that some of the trees needed removal due to pests and structural conditions that could potentially cause a hazard, and a short and long-term goal needed to be established. This is the current status of the park. These pictures were taken in March. You can see the declining eucalyptus tree here and the dead eucalyptus tree here. So on January 17, 2018, the city invited board-certified master arborists and registered consulting arborists who came highly recommended by the ISA, the International Society of Arbiculture, not to mention JPIA, Joint Powers and Insurance Authority. The board-certified master arborist was asked if he can give a verbal assessment along with an analysis of the current state of the park. His opinion, along with JPIA's recommendation, was to first establish a plan or objective goal. The major objectives of the plan are summarized. One, to clearly define path of travel with signage. Two, to preserve and protect the safety of Gum Grove Park users and adjacent residential properties. Three, to improve and enhance the current health and stability of the ecosystem. Four, to enhance the visual design and aesthetics experience in the park. And five, to maintain and ensure the public access to the park. Again, here you can see over the trail, we have a dead eucalyptus tree, and we've got some eucalyptus trees here in decline. In this picture here, we have some irregular growth on this tree, and we have some dead eucalyptus trees along the trail here. Here's an aerial shot of the entrance of the park, and you can see the park is vacant with no trees, with a dead eucalyptus tree pictured here. So we would like to start a restoration and preservation plan. The city, along with some of the residents, are proposing to start a restoration and preservation plan. We would recommend going along with the recommendations of JPIA and the board-certified master arborists. So that would be signage at the entrance of the park, showing it as the designated trail. And I chose these two signs, I like them because they were kind of made of wood, constructed of wood, and they show in each sign here the path of travel for whatever park these are to. Two is to preserve and protect by preserving and protecting the safety of the park users and adjacent residential properties. This would basically be entailing the removing of any structural limbs like you see in this picture here over the trail, along with any dead trees, along with managing defensible Again, in this picture, you have homes along Crestline here, and here's a shot of the canopy of Gum Grove. You can see some in decline here, some dead trees along the grove. Three, to improve and enhance, we would recommend improving, enhancing the current health and stability of the ecosystem by planting different age, size, and gum species of eucalyptus in the grove. This would diversify and strengthen the current stability of the ecosystem. So pictured here, we have a 15-gallon eucalyptus, we've got some 5-gallons in some 24-inch boxes. So we would recommend planting maybe sugar gums, different diversity, and lemon gums in the park, along with these different ages and sizes in the park. Again, improve and enhance, you can see some decline in these trees. These are the trees that we'd be more likely to remove, and these new trees would go in places where we can fit them and trees that we've replaced and removed. Four, the aesthetic experience for users. We'd like to enhance the visual design and aesthetic experience in the park. So this is a current picture of the park as you drive into it off of Avalon. You can see it's, it's, there's nothing there in the park as you drive in. So we would recommend, here in the pictures we planted, in the photo, we've got three California coastal oaks, which is Quercus agrifolia, and to accent those oaks, we went with some desert willows here, just for color purposes. Again, in the main entrance of the park, just left of that picture that we just saw, you have a dead eucalyptus tree. There was a blue gum here with no trees in the background. We would recommend planting California live oaks, again, accented with the desert willow. This is a picture of the entrance of the park, and this is just kind of showing you what we can do. We've got some sage planted here along the hillside for erosion purposes and added color. I use lantana in here. I wouldn't recommend planting lantana. I would go with more, a mixture of deep-rooted California native shrubs and trees mixed with shallow-rooted shrubs and perennials that'll control erosion on the slopes here. Again, this was just a different angle. I like the way that this angle looked, so to give you a different look as you drive into the park, showing the space here. I just really liked, this was a nice picture from the ground level, so I wanted to add it to the presentation for you guys. And then here is just a great picture, panoramic shot of Gum Grove Park here. You have the beautiful city of Seal Beach behind it. If you look far back here, you can see Catalina Island.
Very nice.
That's it.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
I have.
Councilmember Steven?
Yeah, my question would be on your entrance, why you decided not to go with the eucalyptus and why you decided to go with the oaks?
The oaks are, it's a coastal live oak, so this is the general habitat where you would find them. Oaks are sturdy, I think, for a focal point. It just makes for a prettier focal point, the oak tree versus the eucalyptus. We still want to replenish the grove with eucalyptus trees, but I think for that entrance, you really want to have something distinguished, and I think the coastal live oak is definitely the tree for that area.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay. Councilmember Sastik?
Hi. I communicated with somebody from El Dorado Audubon because you were mentioning species in the report, and she was just reminding me that it is breeding season from February 15 through July 15 there, with some hawks and owls beginning nesting as early as January. Last spring, I walked the grove and got to see the horned owls nesting. It was really cool. But if, whatever plans, if they're very disruptive, please try to avoid nesting season.
Definitely. We've taken that into consideration. I was actually walking the grove this morning and got to see the cooper hawk nesting, starting to build nests. We wouldn't go into possible, probably until after the nesting season, which would probably maybe right around October is when we, we wouldn't remove all dead trees. We would remove only specific hazards in the park. We definitely want to leave that for the wildlife refuge habitat.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Anyone else?
Well, I want to thank you.
Well, I want to thank you, Joe and Tim. I know you've been paying a lot of attention to this, and the detail has been great. And also for answering all the inquiries with the residents. And that really helps out everyone a lot. So keep the communication up. And this is a receiving file, so I'd like to bring... Request staff to bring back a management policy in the near future, very near future on this. If we can keep this moving forward, please. Okay, anyone else? Anything else? Okay, we'll move to Item C, which is the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exceptions of items removed by council members. There are no items removed. Is there a motion for Items C through H? Still moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. This passes five-zero. Thank you. Okay, now we have a public hearing.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This is regarding an ordinance to the city of Seal Beach, Zone Text Amendment eighteen-one, amending Title eleven regarding residential development standards in the Surfside Colony area. Areas RLD nine, residential low density. Turn the item over to our interim community development director, Crystal Landavozzo. Crystal?
Good evening. So tonight before you, we have proposed amendments that would address the development standards in the Surfside Colony area. In November twenty-seventeen, staff was directed to communicate with Surfside Colony Homeowners Association and work with them to identify the need for a realignment between the municipal code and the development patterns that exist out in Surfside Colony. Some properties in Surfside Colony are currently designated non-conforming. And... Oh, I apologize for that. One of the items that occurs when a property is considered non-conforming is that there are certain restrictions that are placed on the homeowner as to what type of improvements can be made to the property. Through working with Surfside Colony, the Board of Directors, we were able to identify some potential amendments that could be made to the municipal code that would remove the non-conforming designation from some of these properties and allow other properties in the area to develop in a manner that's reflective of the existing characteristics in the colony. One of the common non-conformities in Surfside Colony is the front yard setbacks, particularly with A row and B row. The front yard setback in Surfside Colony is measured from the side-facing Surfside Avenue. Most of the properties out there have a garage that meets the minimum setback, and a lot of the homes have a cantilever. So wherever the front line of the garage is, there's an extension above that for the second or third floor that comes out to the property line and does not extend past the property line. Somewhere along the lines in the different variations of the code, the current Title eleven no longer allows cantilevering for A row or B row. It only allows that in C row. This is one of the items that the Surfside Colony identified as something that they wanted to address, and that's one of the proposed amendments that's before you tonight. Allowing that cantilever to occur will remove the non-conforming designation from all of those properties that currently have the cantilever, and anyone moving into the colony is able to develop that way so that they're matching the characteristics on the same rows. Similarly, some properties on A row have lots with lower elevations as you move along toward the stand. The code currently allows for raised walkways on A row at a height of not to exceed two feet six inches. Surfside Colony has identified that there are several properties within the area that have raised walkways that exceed this height. So they were built at a time when the code allowed for those walkways to be built at a higher level. Properties now that have the higher level are, again, identified as non-conforming. What the board has requested is that the proposed amendment before you tonight would allow the raised walkways for properties on lots ninety-two A through one-eighteen A to reach a height of not more than nine feet above grade. And this would allow the front entry to come into their primary living space, whereas the grade level generally is leading into the garage and most have either storage or some other access in the back. The Surfside Colony Board of Directors, as we were going through these items, what the characteristics are out in the neighborhood, they requested amendments to similar development standards that apply to decks and roof screens along A row that lead out to the lease area onto the beach behind A row. Residents in A row are permitted to lease ten feet of the lease area adjacent to their property. So Surfside Colony would be... I'm sorry. Surfside Avenue is identified as their front property line, and at the rear, the side that faces the stand is considered their rear property line. Adjacent to that rear property line, Surfside Colony holds a ten-foot wide lease that they allow their residents to build decks into. So there are currently provisions in the code currently that allow the first floor and the second floor to have decks that go into that area. What they're requesting now is that their third floor be also allowed to project a deck into that area of no more than five feet. The proposed amendments would allow the decks on the upper floors and more flexibility in the design of wind screens and sun screens. These proposed amendments would continue to allow glass railing on the exterior decks and would reflect the characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood, which, again, encourages use of these outdoor spaces and the roof decks. This, I believe, concludes staff's reports. The... For general public information, the ordinance was attached to the staff report that was provided as part of this agenda. Some of the confusion that we found at the planning commission meeting was the interpretation of what the new language is, what the existing language is, and what the strikeouts and removal is going to be. So in the proposed ordinance, everything that is identified with an underline is new language that is being proposed into the code, and everything that has a line going through it, a strikeout, is language that's being deleted from the code. Anything that does not have those markings is part of the existing code that we have not amended or proposed to make any change to. So that concludes staff's reports, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions, the council?
I don't have any right now, thanks.
Okay, well, we'll go up to public hearing, I guess.
Mayor, if I could briefly read into the record that we did receive three communications regarding this item. We received an email this afternoon from Francie Witten regarding concerns on various sections of the proposed ZTA eighteen-one. We also received two email communications from Steve Rowe.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak on this topic? Thank you. You'll be given five minutes, please. Well, you'll be given five minutes. Can you state your name? Yeah, okay.
My name is Robert Osborne, and I'm an owner, occupant of D ninety-five in Surfside Avenue, Surfside. I wish to ask the council to either refer this action back to the Seal Beach Planning Commission or alternatively make some substantive changes to the proposed plan. The primary reason I'm making this request is because the directors of the Surfside Colony ALTD Corporation provided inaccurate information to the city of Seal Beach community development staff that directly led to their recommendation for the proposed action. In particular, one of the recommendations in the proposed action on Table eleven dot two dot zero five dot zero one five dot A dot one footnote L two is to create a new standard for a subset of A row lots that permits owners to encroach into side yard setbacks for elevated walkways. In support of that change in zoning, the Board of Directors reported to the commission, and I quote from the report, "The homeowners on B row, directly behind these A row lots, have all their living levels on the upper floors. Garages are on the ground level and will not have their views blocked." This statement is false. Seven of twenty-seven B row homes in the affected area have their major living areas on the ground floor on the first level. This change to the zoning would allow substantially more than fifty percent blockage of Peekaboo Sand, Whitewater Surf, Ocean, and Catalina views. Additionally, the city staff was not apprised of the fact of nine-foot elevated walkways for the purpose of connecting to decks extended into the setback view space to meet the walkways with blocked sand and whitewater surf views even at the second floor level for some, if not all, the affected B row homes. The city staff during the planning meeting affirmed that they had relied on the corporation's recommendations. The recommendations from the corporation's board also suggested that these walkways were needed to gain access to front decks from the beach and side yards. This would be an incorrect interpretation of the facts. Stairs to the decks in the sidewalk, side yards, can easily be provided on decks themselves without extending the decks into the side yard setback open view space. This fact should have been correctly reported to the planning commissioner for the purpose of making a recommendation. I'm not going to read all the letter here. I've provided it to you for the rest of some of the other more minor details, but I would like to say that the original developers in Surfside actually thought out the idea of offsetting the lot lines so that B row lots sit halfway generally offset a half a house. And by doing that, when you're sitting in your living room and looking out the window, you look right down the setback corridor into the ocean view. Over time, when some of those old cottages washed out in storms, they replaced them with homes on pilings behind the garages. And that was pretty much standard back in the fifties and so forth. And people would put up elevated staircases up to the top of the piling so that they could enter their homes. Since then, a rock revetment has been provided in front of the homes, and people are rebuilding rooms and houses directly back on the sand.
You have thirty seconds.
Yes, okay, thank you. And so the elevated walkways are not needed. Many of the houses, in fact, most of the houses along there have interior staircases. If you go into at the lot level, ground level, and go... And then they have a stairwell that extends the entire height of the house for moving up and down. Additionally, stairways can be provided in this deck space that is already being leased to the A row lot, A row homeowners and to be able to access the beach.
Thank you. Your time is up, yeah.
Thank you.
City Council? My name is Todd Stockwell. I live at A one-one-five Surfside. And I'm at any property area that is in question, the west end of Surfside. What Robert forgot to mention or kind of depicted a false image of his whitewater view is that from the street level, which is where his main living area is, he's got a five-foot revetment blocking him immediately. Not only that, but in Surfside, we have gates that block the view of our trash cans, and they can be up to six foot high. So I didn't want to block anybody's view, and I have a plan that I'm trying to add on my house. And I'm affected directly by both of these non-conforming issues. So my house is built above the sand on pilings. There's nothing on the sand underneath my house. My front door is elevated five foot above the sand, and I have a five-foot walkway that allows me access. If I want to make a change or an addition to my house, I can't enter my house. I have to take the walkway away, and with the cantilever issue, I would have to cut off three feet of two levels of my house. So it's basically... I'm stuck with my house the way it is. I can paint it, but I can't improve it unless we make a change. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers. John Blake. My brother and I own A one oh-two in Surfside. We are a fourth-generation family in Surfside Colony, so it's quite a bit of history. We've seen the small cottages over the years built up into many of the A row houses, and B row for that matter, because the only way to go is up. I have sandbagged through at least three good storms. We are on pilings as well. And with respect to some of the other comments, I speak in favor of these proposed changes because of there are many homes that have the cantilever above the garage. I think that's appropriate. Anyone that drives through Surfside sees that that is not affecting anyone, and to make changes and someone that's doing any building having to push back from that, I think, would be a bit unreasonable. In regards to the raised walkways, I bring up some of the storms because we're on pilings, as most of the homes are. Our home on A one oh-two was the last home standing in nineteen sixty-three. We've got the newspaper articles still in our home. My grandmother brought in the house movers and put tires around our pilings. But if somebody wants a walkway high and it makes them feel secure should another storm come through, my hat is off to them, and I support that. I still have a flood line in our house that we marked the last storm that went through. So these changes are appropriate. I don't think they're going to harm anyone, and I think it allows for those that are in Surfside to continue to build in a non-threatening manner. And the community is a good community and lives, for the most part, in harmony. We've had our bumps the last few years, but it's mostly just a few neighbors that probably could have sat over a beer and worked it out. So anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Joyce Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach. Yeah, they deserve these new rules, just like Old Town deserves them. They're part of your district. So you're taking one without taking the other part. But they deserve those rules. Half of them were built years ago, just like the ones down in Old Town. Nobody was here when they had to have a survey when a property was built in nineteen thirty-one. I went over to the appraiser's office. They don't even have it. They have a picture. They don't even have a picture. There was no real good surveys done on any of Surfside or here in Seal Beach, over here on this side. But that's part of Seal Beach too. And this is part of Seal Beach. And why aren't you doing all of it at once? They deserve to have their problems fixed, and we deserve to have our problems fixed. And a lot of them were not done because there were no surveys that were done back in those days. Even down there on the one-on-the-block of Ocean a couple of years back, they found out that that survey was all wrong. So here we are, again, going through the motions or trying to solve problems, but you need to solve all of them at once because here it says... I love it. The only rooms being... being added are bathrooms, storage rooms, closets, or enlargements of existing rooms." You know what that means? When you don't want us to have bathrooms here, that's discrimination, number one. Number one. They deserve to have their rules changed, and we deserve to have ours changed. If it has to be one-on-one, fine, but the majority of the houses along the coast, on the east coast especially, are under on stilts because of hit floods, the hurricanes. I was here when the El Nino came through in 1982 down on Seal Way. We all had to move out. Everybody had to move out. Were you here? So we have the same problems with our lot lines down here. The garages are on the property lines, a lot of them, and we are part of the problem down here. And if I am taking one section of Seal Beach and not the other, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Laura Cohen, and I live at A-116. I'm Todd Stockwell, neighbor. My husband and I support these three clarifications to the existing code. We do feel that these are just clarifications of existing conditions within the Surfside community. All of these conditions exist in significant number of homes in Surfside, and enacting these changes would be good public policy. If they are not enacted, there would be a majority of structures that are existing non-conforming, and having a high number of homes with existing non-conforming conditions can lead to lack of maintenance or renovation because the homeowner is clearly not able to do it. And that could lead to dilapidated structures. People may feel they have no other opportunity. Maybe they're going to leave. It would open up the homes to sale to speculators, and then we would have different turnover in the community. On the other hand, enactment will facilitate renovations and maintain the character and the continuity of the community, which is good for everybody. With respect to the, I haven't paid much attention to the elevated stairways. I do have one. That's the way the house was built. But I do notice that the people who do not have elevated stairways down in my neighborhood, oftentimes have six-foot fences or gates on either side, and that extinguishes any view whatsoever, where at least if you have a walkway, you still have that open space, and you don't have all the big box, you know, tall and skinny's like you see in a lot of neighborhoods. So I'm in favor of all three of these amendments.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Paul Mesmer, Surfside, B-96, I wish it was A-96. B-96, my wife Bibby and I probably sit on one of the smallest postage-stamped properties in Surfside, so if anybody knows, it's a game of inches. So a little movement here, a little blockage there, this night and day. And I think what Mr. Osborne was bringing forth, and he put a lot of work into reading what the Surfside Board had put forth to the city planning, I think what he was saying was that, sure, there's things there that should be accommodated, but there's other things, as you've heard from a number of speakers before me, there's an exception to every rule. Everybody's got a little different situation, and Surfside, that's amplified. For somebody who says they need a stairway, it affects somebody else. Somebody says they need that, it affects somebody else. And it would seem appropriate that some more thought be given in before the code changes, where it's trying to pass, capture every conceivable variance, where each homeowner could probably come before planning like most do, with an exception to their situation that's partnered with their neighbors to say, yep, go ahead and do that. Makes sense within our planning rules, rather than trying to capture it all in a code that will invariably have a negative impact on residents that are now at one point or another.
John McMahon, Surfside. I'm just here in support of the changes in the code. I am an owner of one of these older homes that probably needs some money put into it, and I just think this code would allow further development and further investment in Surfside. We need the side walkway, the raised walkway to get into our house. Our house is about 10 feet off the ground on stilts, so I'm just here in support of this, and thank you.
My name's Casey Coltra. I live at B-54 in Surfside. I'm on the vice president of the Board of Directors and very instrumental in crafting this language and working with the staff and our council person. I think it's imperative that I kind of give some background about why we're here tonight. As Crystal and also other speakers correctly said, it says, "We're just here to clarify existing conditions that are in Surfside. We're not trying to add more density. We're not trying to," you know, really, we're not trying to block people's views. I am sympathetic to our neighbors, who I know Paul and Bibby very well. However, we looked at what was the greater good for Surfside. It's important to note that on A-row, there's 27 homes. Of those 27, 15, over half of them, have elevated stairways. And to say those 15 can't improve their house, can't add any square footage or do anything because they're non-conforming is just not right. So the Board wanted to address that, and they've been working on this over a year. We've had numerous board meetings. It's been brought up many times in Surfside. And so in November, when they allowed us to come with recommendations, was very welcomed by a majority of the people, I believe, in Surfside. It's also important to know on B-row, there's 28 homes. Seven of those, as correctly noted, are older-style bungalows, seven out of 28. Of those, two have absolutely no view at all. They're right behind an existing house. Not all of them are offset, so we looked at that's okay. There's two of seven. Four have a partially blocked view, either by the fence in front of them, I'm talking about standing on street level, have an obstructed view already with either a stairway or a gate or whatever. One of them, actually, right in front of one of our speakers who's opposed tonight, has an eight-foot glass see-through fence, gate in front of him, with a metal frame on it. So technically, there is a see-through there, but that owner could also take that away tomorrow and put up a gate and be done with it. So we felt that although B-row is somewhat affected by this, there's much, much better good to be brought by adapting these changes or clarifications, if I will. So the Board's unanimous in this. I know it passed planning. We're hoping you'll pass it too. Thank you.
Bibby Mesmer, B-96, with a terrific peek-view view. I'll never be able to build. I have neighbors who have been considerate and have a glass door in front of us, and I think the current bylaws in our community says that you should not block the view of the neighbor in front of you with a solid fence. While though there are those who have done that, I'm always wondering how they got away with it. And so I've seen or heard that this is an excuse tonight for blocking it. I, like my husband, think that maybe exceptions should be made for those neighbors who really need the stairway, but careful consideration. I mean, it's just like cruel, the most cruel thing in the world to block someone's view who has a view. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the comment period. Is there a reading? That's it?
I need to, yeah. Okay, so what I'd like to do is to bring some clarity to how I understand it and where we are. I don't believe that what we're doing, and Crystal helped me understand this, is trying to put into code everything that we think could happen. What I understand that we did is take what Surfside already permits and make that permissible in our code. Is that what we have done?
That's correct. When Steph first began communication with the Board regarding these items, there was a much longer list of items that they wanted to see. Steph worked with the Board, and we went back and forth to identify the items that we believed were reflective of the character that was already there, that were previously identified because all of these structures had been permitted, so they were reflective of what the city had allowed at a certain period. We didn't allow newer items, new projections, new changes that were out of character with what was currently there.
And when this began for us, what we did is we went out to Surfside, we looked at what was there, we looked at what their policies, what everyone gets, they sign, they go along with, and then what was blocking some of the people that wanted to change was that what was in the Surfside permission, we couldn't allow because it did not coordinate with our code. So it's my understanding what we're doing here tonight is aligning our code with what Surfside allows.
That's correct. So we wanted to have more unification in what Surfside was already allowing. What we wanted to prevent was a resident goes through the Surfside Architectural Review Committee, then comes to the city, and then we have our municipal code that applies, doesn't match, and then they have to go back, redo, spend the money redoing all of those plans and the additional costs, then coming back to the city to find something that meets our code.
Okay.
But we were trying to eliminate that back and forth so that there was more unification in the two.
Okay, so the other thing that, as I understand it, everything that has been asked for is everything that Surfside's always allowed, and that for some reason or another, even though our municipal code didn't allow it, our city was signing off on it.
I'm not clear on what.
Yeah, I mean, I just want the audience to understand where we've been. I also brought this to our council and got permission to direct it to staff to work with Surfside on this, and I also went to the July meeting, the Surfside meeting where they have it, and explained to the people there that we were going to do this, and nobody objected to it. So it's kind of caught me by surprise tonight that there are people who are objecting to it, because it's my understanding, all we're doing is bringing clarity, and we're not bringing any new changes to the code, so.
That's correct. As far as staff's understanding and working with the Board on this issue, it was an item that was brought at their past meeting. We've been notified that it was discussed at their board meeting, so that the residents were involved in that process. The only thing staff can control is our notification for the public hearing.
Correct, yeah.
And that we've completed, which is why we have a lot of residents here tonight. I believe that the Board also sent out and pushed out our notice to the residents as well. But you're absolutely correct in that we scaled it to just the items that we believe are already characteristic in the area and will be something that we can accommodate within our code.
Okay, thank you. Then for further discussion, I'd first like to make a motion that we go ahead and adopt this, these changes, so that we can have a seamless procedure. What gets approved in Surfside first, then comes to us, will automatically, the codes will line up. So, but you still have to get it through the Board first, so I, and then you bring it here. And all we're doing is saying that if the Board, if this goes with the Surfside Board list, that now it's part of ours too and makes it possible, whereas before it wasn't possible. So I'd make the motion to adopt, please.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ordinance passes 5-0. Thank you.
That's ordinance 1669, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Seal Beach, Zone Text Amendment 18-1, amending Title 11 regarding the residential development standards in the Surfside Colony area, Zoned RLD-9, Residential Low Density-9.
Okay, thank you. There is no unfinished or continued business. At this time, I'll adjourn the City Council meeting to Monday, April 9, 2018, at 5:30 PM to meet and close session if necessary. Thank you, everybody.